Okay, I would like to call to order the Wednesday, November 8th meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with approval of the minutes from the October 25th meeting. Do we hear any additions, corrections, deletions? I had one thing, no, I guess not. Anybody? Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Nelson, a second?
Second.
From Victoria, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there any, item number two, is there any correspondence from staff?
Nothing from staff this evening.
Okay, so item three is normally a time for the Transportation Commission meeting report from our representative Joel Hamilton, but he's not present tonight. Do either you or Anne know anything about what he might have said if you were here?
I don't think they had a meeting since the last time.
Okay, so they, okay, all right. So we move on to item four, which is public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission about matters that aren't on our agenda or pending before us, and are you here for that reason?
Negative.
Negative, okay, well, seeing how there's no one here who wants to speak to us tonight, those of you who might be listening might want to think about some things in the future. You have a three-minute opportunity. Okay, moving on to item five, we have a public hearing, and Mike is going to begin by making a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Before you tonight, we've got a public hearing for a proposed rezone. It's located at 1330 Indian Hills Drive. It's a parcel, it's about 45,152 square feet in size, so a little over an acre in size. The applicant's requesting a rezone from this property from general business to the residential office zone, and this was platted originally within the Indian Hills 6th Edition subdivision. So there it is outlined in the center of your screen in red, got Indian Hills Drive. So this is an older photo, this is from 2012. We hope to get some, actually, they flew over it later, earlier this year, but the, I think the files went corrupt, so hopefully we'll be getting some updated imagery next year, but, so this is a dated photo, so Indian Hills Drive, you can see the right-of-way. This is actually constructed with curb gutter sidewalks and tree lawns on both sides of the street now. This is Mountain View Road here to the east. Directly to the east of the property is the USDA office building, and to the north of that is Alturus Technology Park and Alturus Drive, which extends over to Blaine Street over here, and then you have Indian Hills 6th subdivision, which has single-family residential lots on a pony place, and then a combination of twin home and townhomes on Alturus Drive. Taking a look at the comp plan, designate, land use designation for the property, it's currently designated as auto-urban commercial. The property to the west, which is currently being developed as townhouse-style multifamily units, this property right here is urban residential, as well as the property that's, I think, just getting foundations for some multifamily development directly further on to the west there. And then current designation for the single-family area would be neighborhood conservation, which we're planning on changing with the comp plan update, and then further on, we've got Indian Hills 6th Park, which is designated as parks and open space. To the east is also auto-urban commercial, and to the south is auto-urban residential. To the north is a research technology park designation with Alturus Technology Park, and then you also have Alturus Park there in that development. So taking a look at what that auto-urban commercial designation states in the comp plan, it's intended to provide for commercial services and developments that are motor-vehicle oriented, and also require a large amount of land. It should be located adjacent to existing commercial developments and along major arterials where vehicular traffic can be accommodated, and then it points to the motor-business zone as being the most appropriate designation. And so what we have here is maybe a request to have a less intense commercial designation than what you have with the comp plan designation, so I just wanted to kind of go over Idaho State law, which requires the zoning code to be in accordance with the comp plan, but there, they allow you to zone for a lower intensity than is indicated by the plan. It's just the issue with zoning to a greater intensity is where you run into an issue. So that would be what we have here, is really zoning it to a lower intensity than is indicated in the current comp plan designation. So this is the proposal, this is current zoning configuration, so it's currently general business along with the USDA parcel to the east. We've got RTO with Alturus Technology Park to the north. Residential office is directly to the west. You have some farm ranch, and then further on to the east of Mountain View Road is motor business. And this would be the proposal, rezoning that to be consistent with the property to the west as the residential office designation. What the RO zone says in the zoning code, it's a moderate intensive zone, includes both offices and high-density housing. It's more intended to be a transitional zone between commercial and residential, or industrial and residential zoning districts, and then it points to where it's appropriate, appropriately applied, on the perimeter of commercial and industrial districts where they have but residential land uses. So this is, you know, kind of a similar situation, where you have general business on one side and residential office on the other, where they're currently constructing residential development. Where transportation network use is greater than desirable for lower-density residential uses, you have Mountain View Road, which is designated as a minor arterial, just one property to the east there, so there is a good transportation network, and where landforms create sites which are reasonably accessible by transportation systems and which are buffered from nearby residential uses, and where the development patterns in a neighborhood will allow development of moderate intensity to occur without producing adverse visual impact or harm to the transportation network. And then looking at the utilities and streets in the area, currently stubbed water and sewer to that property. It's already been determined by Public Works when the subdivision was approved that it had adequate capacity. Indian Hills Drive, that's designated as a local street. It's currently fully developed, and then they do have on-street parking on both sides of the street, and Mountain View Road is, as like I mentioned before, is a minor arterial. So just looking at our rezone criteria, just to refresh your memory on these, has to be consistent with the comp plan, has to be, has to provide for logical and orderly location of land uses and community services and facilities. The use is expected to occur as a result of the rezon will be compatible with the surrounding area, and the size-type density of development, expected as part of the rezone, will not place an undue burden upon the delivery of services, and that includes by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction, like the school district, and then the size-type density of the development expected to occur as a result of the rezon could be adequately served by existing transportation network, public facilities and services. Applicant did conduct a public neighborhood meeting with the affected property owners within 600 feet, and that happened on September 28th, 2017, and those materials are attached to your packet. I don't believe, no, there was nobody in attendance in that meeting, and staff recommends that the commission conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, recommend approval of the proposed rezon to city council, and then direct staff to prepare the relevant criterion standards document. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions.
Okay, but I think before we, Victoria would make, would like to make a disclosure statement.
Yeah, disclosure. I need to disclose that I went by the site only in terms to orient myself to the area, and that drive-by will not affect my decision tonight.
Okay.
Well, I guess some of us have to go by the site almost every day. Yeah, we can't stop living just because we drive on Mountain View.
Right, we have to just keep blinders on. Yes.
Well, I would say that I need to make that disclosure too, and I had no idea that that was disclosure-worthy.
Well, I don't think many of us did until some of us went to a workshop that the city legal had for us saying this, which surprised me when I learned this, because it, apparently we're all supposed to get on a bus and go together if we do this.
Okay.
So that's, am I correct in that assessment?
Correct. Yeah, it's just quasi-judicial matters that you have that issue, not legislative matters where it affects the whole community.
Do you want to take the time to tell those people who didn't go to the workshop? In other words, I'm well aware that we don't typically want to, we don't want to go out and start having a major discussion with people in the neighborhood and what have you, but driving by the site or looking at it so you can see what it is, are you kidding me?
I don't think Mike made the rule up.
I'm ready to hear it. I didn't, I wasn't at the meeting.
Well, it's just, it's really legal principles, right, legal law, and so anything that affects the entire community, like you have a, like our land use table ordinance or the comp plan re, you know, update, those things that affect the entire community, you can talk about them, you can go visit any site in the city, you know, that relate to those, but when you start getting into quasi-judicial, which this one is, it only affects a certain area of town, then they have what they call ex parte communication, which you can't have any type of communication outside of the public hearing, and that extends on to like site visits. So all the facts are supposed to be presented in the public hearing, and if you're, you know, it's perceived that if you're going out to the site, you're generating some of your own facts by just visiting the site that aren't included as part of the discussion of the public hearing that everybody else can't hear, so.
I'm well aware of that, but I, I think it's overkill to suspect that driving by a site on the public right-of-way is in any way falling into that category. I mean, we've been through this many, many times in the last years, but if I'm, if I go and talk to Garrett about this project, that's a whole nother story. I get that, but I don't think, I just don't see even driving by, I don't, I hope you're not telling us that we shouldn't drive by any site that might be on an upcoming thing.
Not with the, apparently not with the intention of looking at it.
With the intent, I mean, I mean, you know, I think it's a little bit different if you drive by.
What if you have a downtown site and you work downtown? I'm dumbfounded by that, by the, so anyway, we can talk about it later, but.
Well, it's, it's more, I direct him to Rod, our city attorney, you know, he's the one that's supposed to direct us, but I think it's a little bit different if you drive past a site on your way to work every day as to going out of your way to go out there and drive around and check it out.
Take photographs.
Little bit different. Like if you're up, you know, going out of your way to go up to Peekaboo Estates to drive around Orchard and Landy Lane, I'd say that that's probably, you know, would qualify as that.
Huh.
So that was news to me until I.
Yeah, me too. Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not impressed. So I guess I'll, I'd like to, I'd be happy to talk to any lawyer, I just am dumbfounded about it, but I think we can go ahead and vote. It just happens that I didn't, you know.
Any other comments or questions for Mike before we open the public hearing?
Well, I guess I have to disclose that I went, I drove by it too and looked at it, if we have to disclose that.
Well, why don't you hand him the statement?
No, I just, I have to disclose it, I did. I went and looked by it, got a feel for it, looked at it, and. Because it made sense.
Yep. I, I did it regularly for two years before I found out.
And until, until we had images and an ability to take pictures, I mean, 15 years ago, you couldn't get a picture of a site. We were always just discussing blindly what it was, and so we've certainly had those, those discussions, but I think it's, it's important that everybody, or as many people on every commission that the city has, and particularly this one, that we know as much about the city as we can possibly know. So driving around on a Sunday, doing your, getting to know the, the next dead-end place is part of, of living in a village, in my mind, so anyway, I guess I'm.
Well, if all of you had come to the meeting besides just me alone, or maybe Rod was there too, we could have a little bit of a, more of a pushback, because I, I'm inclined to understand what you're saying and agree with you. I mean, it, there, it seems like there's this threshold of, well, you know, it's nice to see something three-dimensionally and understand what it, you know, but I guess we're not supposed to do it. Yes, Victoria?
Okay, so if I can clarify, being the newbie and having all this orientation material to read that's this high, you know, I.
Sure.
Checked out the site to be prepared, and then I got around to reading the public service handbook, and it says, if you, if I am considering a quasi-judicial land use matter and want to visit a site, is it okay for me to go out and look at the property and look around or do my own independent research? Answer is no. And I, so I checked with Rod Monday night, because I was at the city council meeting, and you can pull it up on Google Map, but you can't go there, because you could have the public perception that you're.
Oh, okay.
Doing something incorrect. And so he said, just do a, just do a disclosure and don't do it again, okay?
Well, now we all know except for Joel, who's.
If you want to see it, then we have to all go together on a tour.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. So any other comments?
Yes, I actually have a question pertaining to that.
Okay.
So is there anything that you would, in particular, that you can do in residential office that you can't do in general business?
You would be able to do more in general business as far as commercial development. As, you know, if you wanted to do strictly residential, with residential being on the ground floor in general business, you'd have to go through a conditional use permit, whereas residential office, it would just be a use allowed by right. So that, that'd kind of be the distinction between the residential and those two zones, but yeah, general business would allow a lot more commercial than residential office does. Residential office really only allows professional offices, so you have like an attorney, engineer, architect, you know, those types of offices.
So, and it doesn't really have any effect on dwellings or density or?
It doesn't, no. No, I think the, the density in general business, you know, usually it's determined by the amount of parking you need to have, so that, that would determine it regardless of what the zone is.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite the applicant to come up and speak. Are you the applicant?
I think so.
Okay.
There might be a stampede behind me.
So please state your name, address, and limit your comment, well, you don't have to, because you're the applicant.
All right, my name's Garrett Thompson, and I'm here as Principal Manager, Thompson Development LLC. Address is 1024 Pine Crest Road here in Moscow, Idaho. I guess where the discussion was just a few minutes ago, I was kind of aware, I'm just going to state something really quick, I was kind of aware of this, it was brought up a couple of years ago, when we were plating Indian Hills, and I wanted to take, well, I was trying to get Parks and Rec Commission and city council members to, when we were, had to do parkland dedication, and Bill Belknap informed me at that time that we would have to get a nice little van, and we would have to put everybody in the van, and put their seat belts on, and go on a bus ride. So unfortunately, that sounded like more hassle than it was really worth, so we just kind of started throwing down parkland, and finally, the Parks and Rec Commission and city council approved it, so it does kind of seem like an odd thing, but who knows? But back on this little topic here, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you, Mike, for your presentation. This is pretty straightforward request. The lot is currently zoned general business, and I respectfully request that you recommend to the city council that you approve the rezon to residential office. The RO zone gives us more market flexibility. It is not an incompatible use as the property adjacent to the west is already zoned residential office, and the property to the east is used as office space for the USDA and zoned motor business. I appreciate your time this evening and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Yes, Rob, Mr. Thompson.
On, on the invitations that went out to the property owners, and nobody came to the meeting, have you had any discussions with the residents of the apartments that are adjacent?
So it doesn't, since they're apartments, the invitations just go out to the apartment owner.
The owners, correct.
And that would be one of Noel Bloom or Curtis Bloom's LLCs, but I have not heard personally of anything negative or positive about it, and I checked with Mike this afternoon if he had heard any feedback. You know, when Victoria was driving around and not looking at the street and looking at the property like she shouldn't have been, there is a sign out there that, you know, has city information of how to contact if they have questions, concerns, so other than that, I would just recommend that the commission keep their eyes on the road when they're driving and don't be looking around, but no, other than that, haven't heard anything, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay, well, thank you, and given the absence of anyone else in the audience, we will close the public hearing, and then we need some internal discussion, now we're allowed to. Okay, does anyone have any?
Just go ahead and direct staff to provide relevant criteria. Anybody have anything to say?
I mean, no, I think it's consistent with our, with our comprehensive plan, and it's a good transition area. I mean, you do have RO right to the west of it, GB to the right of it right there, I mean, it's, seems like a no-brainer, but I would, I would do the same thing, I would direct staff to prepare the relevant criteria.
Okay, well, I need a motion to that effect.
Make a, yeah, go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Well, first, we need a motion on whether to accept.
Recommend approval.
Pardon me?
Recommend approval to city council.
Right, we need to, first, we have to recommend that we're.
Do that now.
Yeah.
Hells, get it.
I second that.
Okay, so we do that first. All in favor of approving the submitted subdivision plan, or?
Aye.
Aye.
A rezon, excuse me. Opposed? All, okay, everybody's in favor. All right, unanimous. So now I need a motion to direct staff.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Direct staff to prepare the relevant criteria.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, we, moving right along?
Thanks, Garrett.
Thank you.
That didn't make us think, did it?
Now, we are going to talk about the 2009 comprehensive plan updates, the future land use map and designation, and the last meeting, we were asked to take a careful look at the map, and then you revised it since then and incorporated some of our proposals, so this one.
Yeah, so.
This one's different. Yeah, this is the previous.
Yeah, just kind of the transition that we had. So, you know, this was the neighborhood conservation with all the, the areas in gray, which covers probably about a third of the city. This is what I brought to you last time, so we were going through, and I think I had applied a designation to the areas that were designated as neighborhood conservation, so we had a lot of areas in urban residential, because that really covered the widest amount of residential use, you know, it covered a lot of the urban core, you know, residential neighborhoods, but it also included R3 and R4 zones, which would be, you know, Robinson's, some of the A and Baker apartments, any, pretty much any apartment complex in Moscow would be under that designation as well. After our discussion last time, the commission directed, I think, me to create a new land use designation to draw a distinction between more of these compact neighborhoods and the multifamily residential areas, and so that's what I had done, I had gone out and taken a look at, you know, what some other jurisdictions had, I looked at what Boise had, and they have, you know, Boise has something similar to us, although they do have the inclusion of more of a high-density residential zone. So their other residential zones are similar to ours, they just call them different names, but they're, they're similar density, similar size of lots and widths, but we have suburban residential, auto-urban residential, urban residential, and now we've got high-density residential. So that's the, you know, the gradation of residential designations, and so I had gone around and designated a lot of the areas that were, you know, apartment complexes, a lot of duplexes, triplexes, Robinson Mobile Home Park, you know, a lot of those strictly R4 designation properties, and put those as high-density residential, left the, more of the earlier neighborhoods closer to the city core as urban residential, so we've got some on A and C, a lot of the areas, Fort Russell, you know, areas south of Third Street and Sixth Street, all the way down to the Troy Highway. I think I had made probably this change today, I kept on looking at it a little bit more. There was an area down here, we thought that probably should be auto-urban residential instead of urban residential, so I think that was the main change, is taking that chunk out, but I've got some maps, we can take a look at it closer.
That's not, that's, that's a little change from the map, isn't it?
Yeah, a little change from the map that you have in your packet, yep, yep. And then I had gone through and revised some of these definitions of, you know, first one is auto-urban residential, ended up adding, you know, something that these other jurisdictions did, I thought was helpful, was to give kind of an average lot size. You know, it's hard to compute or translate what density means, you know, if you don't have kind of an example with our, our guide to density that we put out a few years ago. So we thought of giving an example of kind of the, the common lot sizes of those designations, so it includes single-family detached homes, lots ranging from seven to 11,000 square feet in size, and more isolated from surrounding uses, which may require residents to rely more on automobile transportation. Designation includes those areas generally anticipated to be developed at low to moderate density residential uses, densities between three and six units per acre, could include a mix of detached, single-family, and I wanted to add twin homes, since we do have that option now, and townhome, which was there previously, and then they also had limited-scale multifamily residential dwellings, so, you know, this is, you know, seems to be more towards the high-density residential where you would have multifamily, so we had eliminated that and just included single-family, twin home, and townhouse. And then eliminated the portion about, since we're getting rid of the multifamily, appropriate buffer yard requirements and building scale and design standards to ensure compatibility. If we're going to eliminate multifamily from that, that use designation, then we don't need to include any buffer yard issues. And then it goes on to say that manufactured home parks could be appropriately permitted in this district, just, I think that, you know, if we're going to classify those as more high-density residential, that we would just eliminate that sentence from the auto-urban residential designation. And then it points you to appropriate zones, R1, R2, R3, and then it always had this statement at the end with R3 about in conjunction with planned unit developments, which was always a little bit odd, you know, to say that you, the only way you could get an R3 was go through a planned unit development, which I think, you know, maybe a good example would be Harvest Hills, where you have probably twin homes that transition into single-family in the future, and then you've got the neighborhood business parcel across the street. Why would you would point people to requiring them to go through a PUD, you know, with that, and so we had just gotten rid of the PUD statement and just said that R3 in order to, you know, R1, R2, and R3 in order to include a mixture of attached and detached dwellings where appropriate. and detached dwellings where appropriate. So, you know, those areas where, you know, like Harvest Hills, where they may be adjacent to an arterial and a collector, you know, right there at that busy intersection, that they could have some twin homes, and then as it goes up, as the street extends further into, you know, the hills, you end up transitioning into a single-family, and that's what we were thinking with that.
Mike, could you go one slide back? Maybe you don't have it. Oh, never mind, you don't. I, I'll just ask it later. But I had a question on the previous one, the suburban residential, about density. Because it's in our paperwork. Where, in 2.28, when they refer to, in the first paragraph, clustered development with preservation of open space and sensitive areas, et cetera. In that clustered development, which is being encouraged in suburban residential, what density are we looking at? Should we be specifying there as well? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we have gross densities of 0.85 to 1.55 dwelling units per acre.
So, the clustered development would fall in that range? Or would it be denser?
I think they were saying that, you know, maybe you could get a, you know, we don't really run into a whole lot of suburban residential. It's mainly county development. So, they're like an acre in size is the minimum lot size. So, that, pretty much across the board, that's what we call our zone as well, is suburban residential, and it's a minimum of an acre in size. Usually what happens when you get some type of cluster density bonus is that, you know, if you're preserving open space or sensitive areas, you're able to get, and you're clustering the development, you're able to get a density bonus as part of that.
Okay.
But we just, yeah, you know, and that's why I think that they have, you know, the statement where they say gross densities ranging from 0.85 to 1.55 dwelling units per acre, probably just to cover, you know, if they were, if it was just strictly held at one acre lots, then it would be one dwelling unit per acre. But, you know, they go a little bit below that, assuming that there may be at some point in the future a density bonus that is applied for clustering. But usually, we're not going to have that a whole lot. You know, it's going to be mainly, you know, the areas where I think we have suburban residential are on the North Polk, you know, corridor, where a lot of lot divisions have happened out in the county, and now we're, you know, kind of reaching that point, and there's not, it's hard to grow because just the way it's kind of piecemeal development over time and kind of fragmented lots, you know, there is really, you know, I don't see either leapfrog over that kind of development, but the problem is you have to extend city services all the way up there. And the rest of the areas we have designated around the city are auto-urban residential, which would be the R one, R two, R three. So, I think that that's, you know, we want to promote, you know, a little bit higher density than suburban residential. It's mainly just those areas on North Polk that we have currently designated as that, mainly just because we have a, you know, an issue with orderly development in that area, you know.
I want to follow that up a little bit. If we remember back, I don't know if you're, maybe you're too young, remember back a few years when we had our area of impact was like a half to a mile outside the city before we got in trouble with the law and all that? And if we had that, if we were looking at that area of impact as a larger area, do you think that would bring this urban, suburban residential forward? The dilemma that I see, and of course, we seem to get caught in this a few, quite a few years ago. If you inspire people to have this suburban residential where you've got an acre-sized lot out there on Orchard, and out on Polk and Orchard, those are big lots. And we, I was just driving around in it, I want to say that I was driving around town. And you wonder what's going to happen when the city grows, you know, in 20 years, and we're trying to be more dense everywhere, and of course, there will be pockets of these big, big lots that are an acre or three-quarters of an acre or what have you. And you wonder if that's wise for a city to sponsor something that we know we're going to, we're going to kind of be a little worried about in 20 years. You know, as we grow out, we presume that most of the average citizens, especially in a town like ours, are going to be, are not going to be bigger, bigger lots. There's a few of those, and they're lovely, and they're, it's really, it's really nice. But as I drove around in it, we were just, we were going out to see the bridge, you know, in, out at Mountain View, and then we thought, well, let's just knock around. It worries me as to how these little pockets of bigger lots, how do they then fit into the, it makes the city look pretty weird as the city grows. Because I think we can almost say that in another 20 or 30 years, that'll all be surrounded by development, and most of the lots are going to be in the sort of seven to 10,000 size. And this isn't going to fit into it. And you just wonder, I don't know, I'm just having a little planning struggle.
Well, the suburban residential.
I'm happy that, I mean, you're saying, well, we don't, we don't have many, much of that, and I think that's good, that we don't.
Yeah, I think the only parts we have are the existing areas. So, this is the, you know, North Polk area that's pretty much already fragmented out into development. This is, what, Arborcrest here? So, that's all, you know, they did a subdivision, it's all one-acre lots that was previously approved. This is the kind of Quail Run area, Highland, Pheasant Run? Area here, and those all, you know, have one-acre lot sizes. Hershey over there. And so, you know, that's kind of the issue, but if you look at the remainder of the area, we have that as auto-urban residential, which could be a combination of R one, R two, R three. You know, we want to promote kind of this logical orderly subdivision development so we can extend in that kind of logical and orderly fashion. If we have a property out here that all of a sudden, we just let, do a lot division, and they end up with four giant-sized lots without any roads or, you know, they're never going to end up penciling out to put a road all the way through unless you do development that looks something like this, you know. You're never going to be able to get the money out of the property with just four giant lots. You would have to, you know, do some type of, you know, panorama, tani, you know, these areas that are R two and have a common, you know, seven to 11,000 square foot lot size in order to make it pencil on that property. And we don't want it to happen, to have it fragmented, because next thing you know, you know, how does it, how does development grow in this area? You know, we need to have roads extended and city services extended, and then it kind of just leaps, leapfrogs over there. And, you know, then they're looking for the city to contribute to the cost of extending the roads and the infrastructure. Whereas the developer, you know, maybe in this area that did a, you know, subdivision of this nature, you know, those would all be extended through our subdivision code, and that's how we continually to grow and extend the city, so. But yeah, these are the only areas, are just really the developed areas that we have as suburban residential, so.
Kurt. Yeah, and I think what's going to happen out there on North Polk, which is my neighborhood, I mean, there's already been one, at least one, I forget if it was a rezone, but it was a lot division, because they had a big lot. And our lot is, you know, three and a third acres, and to be honest, that's probably part of my retirement plan, is at some point, we divide that down. So, I think in the long term, over the next 20 or 30 years, what's going to happen out there is they'll, they'll get slowly but surely divided down to the level that the infrastructure will support. And, you know, it'll probably always be one-acre lots or larger.
Yeah, and you have the road, you know, Polk that goes up, and there's, you know, the lot lines are, between the parcels are such that there's really no, you know, way you could run a road through there that would kind of share, you know, straddle each common lot line. You know, there'd be really no semblance of a property line where you could run a road. So, you're going to be forced with Polk as your main, you know, road, and maybe people do flagpole lots or try to, you know, parcel those off. And then it's just whether or not, you know, Polk, being a rural standard out there, can handle, you know, that increase in traffic.
Yeah. Even so, the good news out there is, you know, if it goes down to a, you know, one or two-acre lots, then luckily, that's not all that many, you know, so probably it would, it would stand up to it.
So, the suburban residential and the clustered development recommendation, I remember maybe 15 years ago, when Randall Arant was out here, and we were looking at, you know, what it would look like within the area of impact, which was farther out, instead of having everything chopped up into one or five-acre lots, clustering development, and then preserving more open space and limiting the infrastructure to a more compact form instead of sprawling it all out. And he was demonstrating the economics of that type of development, and that everybody wins, et cetera. And so, maybe it's a carryover from that? Is that why this is in here?
It's probably a carryover for that, and then, you know, we could possibly look at it with, you know, our subdivision code. You know, that'll be something we'll be tackling in the future, is looking at rewriting the subdivision code and updating that. And usually, that's where that gets implemented, is the subdivision code to allow you to, you know, do cluster development. But we just don't see a whole lot of it, you know. Usually, that cluster development is something that counties deal with in order to preserve agricultural land, you know, riparian areas. And we just don't, you know, have a whole lot of need for cluster development.
Right, okay, well, that, I was just, thank you.
I mean, we could look at some cluster development as far as maybe allowing an increase in density if there was, you know, designated natural, you know, wetlands, or, you know, incentive to preserve those areas instead of just, you know, culvering them and running a road over them. You know, I mean, that's, those are things we could look at in the future for subdivision, you know, rewrites.
Back to the other, just a comment, though. I really appreciate your efforts to show a slightly different zoning code from, from the trailer parks to the core of downtown. I think it really is sensible, and I certainly appreciate that. I think it really helps the map read a lot more. It makes, I think it makes good sense, and I don't mean to, as I said last time, I don't have any argument with the big Almond Street trailer park. I think it's a great, actually, it's a good addition to a town. It gives opportunities for a affordable lifestyle. But I don't think it should be seen in the same way, and so, I'm really pleased with what you've done.
Then there's a finer grain in the traditional neighborhoods, of street networks and blocks, and it's not just about the size of the lot. It's about the density of the street networks and the blocks, and you don't get that so much in the bigger orange areas that you've identified. And so, I think it's more than just, you know, what's built on it, but how it's, how it's defined.
Exactly. Yeah, I think it's really good. So, I appreciate your extra effort, Mike, to do that. That's really a good, I think it makes the map read. I've been looking at this map, of course, for nine to 40 years now, and I am just, it seems so homey to me. I love, I like to look at our map, and somehow, I think those colors really help to tell me the way things are in the, in the urban environment.
Do you still have some areas designated as neighborhood conservation, or am I reading it wrong?
We should.
Oh, so I'm seeing a different color. I'm probably seeing civic institutional, and I'm, yeah, 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 that's what it is. Okay, never mind. Sorry. Okay.
See, I do have neighborhood conservation still in the legend over there, so we'll have to get rid of that.
Okay.
And so, the next one, urban residential, so we've made some adjustments to this one as well, to say that, you know, those designated areas are comprised of more compact residential development at densities of five to 15 units per net acre. This designation encompasses many of the older and historic residential neighborhoods of town, which are located in close proximity to the city core and are developed in a traditional grid, street pattern with alley access.
And could I add that I think you should say, and support multimodal transportation? Because somewhere else, you say auto-oriented, so why not, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then give an example, prevailing sizes within, so probably prevailing lot sizes within existing neighborhoods generally range between 5,000 and 7,000 square feet in size. And then just retaining some of the existing language that we have about planned development, built within this area of this designation should include a minimum of two housing types to achieve the allowable higher density. And then there are more appropriately zoned R three and R four. So, that would be the end of that one. So, I, yeah, I can insert, you know, multimodal in there as well, and so we can add on to that. And then the new one is high-density residential. So, we've got designated areas are intended to allow the highest-density residential development at common densities between 15 and 26 units per acre. Areas appropriate for this designation include those located adjacent to areas of higher activity, where there are a range of uses. High-density residential areas should be located adjacent or in close proximity to designated arterial or collector streets. New areas of high-density residential development should be located near mixed-use activity areas and corridors that accommodate multimodal transportation.
Muti-modal? Typo?
Oop.
And development is a typo. New areas of high-density residential development is a typo.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Apparently, I don't have spell check on InDesign. It does, but gee, it doesn't underline it when you have a misspelling, so, yeah, I'll fix those. Lands designated as urban residential are generally appropriately zoned, medium-density residential, R three, R four, and residential office. So, I don't think we had listed residential office before in any of the designations, so that's what we had come up with for high-density. And then, just a closer view of some of these areas to take a look at. Like I mentioned earlier, this was, I just changed this one today, we had talked about this, I think, previously. We had that as all urban residential, you know, this area here, mainly because, you know, not really the same pattern of neighborhood with the alley, you know, alley access and the grid network. A little bit different, you start to get into some of those probably 50s and 60s-style rancher, split-level homes, once you hit Harold and Kenneth, and more of a, you know, ends up transitioning to more of an auto-urban feel to that area. Originally, I had it as urban residential just because of the close proximity to White and Blaine Streets, which were arterials and collectors, but decided to kind of reel that back a little bit and designate those areas. Also, kind of following the rear lot line. Also, kind of following the, the rear lot line of some of these to make sure that you have the consistency across the street on land there. So that, that's really the only changes that I have that are different from what you have in your packet. And then looking at all these areas where you have a majority of, you know, apartments and condos in those areas, doing those high density residential and then Taylor Louder, Lenter Levick area by the, the university, all those would be high density residential as well. This is the northeast quadrant. So really the changes that we made is Elysian, you got the Ryan Apartments and quite a few duplexes that we've designated as the high density residential. So we've retracted the urban residential in that area and re-designated those. And then just including both sides of Hayes all the way up. I think at one point we had these properties that had, you know, frontage on Garfield. So we ended up just dividing them at the alley there. So you have, that's where the transition is. And so once again, you know, the transition is, you have the houses on both sides of the street that are in the same designation and you're not looking at another designation across the street. And so that was, that was the thinking there.
So Mike, do, as you were looking at those, do you think you were looking more at the land layout or were you also impressed by the nature of the, the housing itself? Because in a sense, it's at that point that ranch style houses start to appear.
Yeah, I think it was a combination of all those things. You know, it was, you know, that you, you start to end up transitioning out of the alley, you know, the alley areas. So everything east of Garfield here doesn't have any alleys in it. The, you know, the style of the home, like you said, is more of a rancher. There's some split levels in there. But yeah, you have the architecture, architectural character transitioning. You've kind of, kind of got the classic grid pattern. While it still may exist, you're, you know, kind of dropping, dropping the alleys.
The blocks are elongated.
Yeah. And, you know, looking at the lot sizes as well, you know, quite, a little bit smaller as you get to the areas closer to the core at Fort Russell. You know, it was kind of just looking at all those things and then making a subjective decision, educated subjective decision, I guess. And then Robinson, you know, we have some areas here that are multifamily. This is a mobile home park as well. And then you've got some multifamily here on the east side of Almond. We've designated as high density. And then you've got, of course, the A and Baker Peterson Corridor, high density. And then Peterson Second Edition, which is not, it's platted, but it's currently undeveloped. We have a number of multifamily lots that are directly adjacent to Baker, which is proposed to be a collector. So I, I've kept those. But the remainder, you know, there are some R3 areas in, in here, but that's more auto urban residential. And so that's what we've kept those at.
Mike, on that one, where, where was the piece, do you remember a couple of years ago, there was a piece of land in there that was going to be like, is that that triangular piece of land there, that a parky land there? The folks were upset about, we had a discussion about it and it's, I'm, it's getting out of my mind, that triangle piece. What is, what's going on in that triangle?
They're, they're, yeah, the green space?
The one up there on Baker?
On the left one?
Yeah.
That one?
Yeah.
Um, that's the parkland in Peterson Second Edition subdivision. So this big square is Peterson Second and it terminates right here on Baker at the end of the street. So it's platted and rezoned and everything and ready to go. They just, the developers hasn't moved forward. But that may have been before my time. But this is, yeah, but this is the parkland, you know? And I think that when we went through the subdivision process, I think there were a number of residents up here on Sunset that were concerned about this development and how it was going to tie in to Sunset Drive up here.
Yeah, it was Sunset people, yeah.
Didn't they want to keep that park space? Is that what I'm remembering when, I think Bill was our representative?
It slipped out of my, my mind and I, it's okay.
Yeah, I have a vague memory, it was access to parkland.
And then this is the southwest quadrant. So we've got, of course, those areas close to the university. And then you end up going up Ridge Road, Lenta area, ends up cresting the hill there, University Heights subdivision, all auto urban residential up in the hills here. And then the low lying areas where we have multifamily, we have that designated as high density residential. Vacant piece of property here off of Palouse River Drive and the future extension of Sunnyside is currently zoned R4. So we've got that high density residential. And then you've got quite a few mobile home parks to the south of Palouse River Drive. We've got his high density residential as well.
Should it be high density urban residential or no? Should it have urban in there?
Um, I, I think it's just, I think you drop, it starts to become pretty confusing. You know, you've got auto urban residential, you've got, you know, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is there, I can't see Eek Street. Why, that must be just under that horizontal one that goes, it must be, no, no, the one just below that. Isn't there any Eeks up there? And I can't see it. So I was just, you think everything's named on there?
No.
No.
Oh, no, okay.
No.
I got it. That's a, that's a lost area. Boy, if you live on Eek Street, you're, it's a very private, it's almost, it's like Wendy's Street. It's like C Street. It's a very special place.
And that's it? Did you guys have any, anything that you saw when you were looking at the land use map that you want to talk about or?
We have all the parks, the public parks on there.
I should, yeah. If I, if I'm missing.
I think you have, I don't think you have Otten's.
My favorite park.
My favorite park. Stone Throw from my house.
Go, go, go look at that park, Michael, where, where she.
Oh, I know, I don't have it. Yeah, it's not on there.
Oh, boy, she's a hard one.
She must have had a magnifying glass for that one. Yeah, I can, I know, yep, that was just one that I missed, so I'll, I'll put that one on there.
I have a question for you under urban commercial where, oh, how, sort of in the middle of the first long paragraph, it says historic district design standards should be established and applied using a pattern book to ensure compatibility. What, what does that mean? A proposed, what's a pattern book?
Ooh, it's a historical term.
It, it meaning, it came out of the comprehensive plan in 1980 or something. I don't know.
So they've got, points you to figure 2.13, which is on the two pages before that. Says pattern book example.
Yeah, and I don't, oh, let's see.
If we just go back one.
Oh.
There.
Oh, oh, okay. I just, yeah, stop.
It's got an illegible example.
It does. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Storefront and upper.
Yeah, I think that that's just what the consultant had in there. I've never heard the term pattern book before, but usually it's design guidelines or, yeah.
Yeah, or something like that, yeah.
You can call that a something different. I could see if I distracted.
No, it's, it's okay. I was just trying to figure, well.
It might be an urban pattern book and I think it made both of us think about a pattern book back in the 1880s, what, you know, you didn't have Better Homes and Gardens and stuff and they, they published books. There were most pattern books.
Right, you just picked out your plans.
And you could go look, I'm a little Queen Anne, I want an Italianate or something.
I want my Sears Roebuck.
Yeah, exactly.
Farmhouse, yeah.
So that's a little different than an urban. This is an urban one that I think Bill, you and Bill have worked on pretty hard to get ideas of not having blank walls and such.
Yeah, yeah, more design guidelines.
And so maybe the word urban could go in there with it because I think it does make good sense.
Right, yeah, okay, that makes more sense, just having the word urban in there, yeah.
Wendy, could I?
Yes, oh, sorry, Rob.
No, it's okay. Mike, are these higher resolution maps available on the website?
Are proposed ones?
Yeah, like, like this one and the one, these blocks that you're showing. I just, I am not getting the resolution on the map that I've got that has.
Yeah, it'll be a scanned copy, but yeah, I can make, we can figure out a way to send these out or post them if you want to take a closer look.
Or even if they're available online is fine.
Well, we can either email them to everybody or find, you know, some, post them to the city website.
I like the, the level of detail.
Yeah, it's nice to be able to zoom in on.
It does change your attitude toward any given little part of town.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's my park?
Yeah, right.
Great. Wonderful.
Yeah, we can send these out, Rob. We'll, I'll get them, all the quadrants set out.
Super, okay, thanks.
That would be good.
Good, Mike, gosh, I'm really, I'm impressed with all this.
Yeah, so is that everything you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So one thing we should announce for anybody who might have missed it is that this is our only meeting in November because the next one would be scheduled for the night before Thanksgiving and so that one is canceled. And in December, we have a meeting on December 13th, but not on December 27th. And for similar reasons. And so our next agenda item, which is shared readings, I think we might be looking at January before we really get to those shared readings. But we were talking about the walkable thoroughfare articles that I sort of think, we, instead of thinking of, of streets as collector streets and minor arterials, this is introducing the concept that those streets should be something more than those names. They should be multimodal and more encompassing of their mission. And, and, and so it's a pretty, it's, it's a continuing ed course that I haven't taken yet, but I plan to take and I was going to. And Mike, have you had a chance to look at it? I'm not sure.
I did look through it, yeah. I still need to read it in detail.
Yeah, I haven't read it in detail. Scanned through it, but it's pretty long, so we probably break it up into relevant segments for this commission, so. But I think it's kind of hard to get it done by the next, oh, I don't know. I mean, yeah, so we, because we don't have it posted yet. So maybe we look at the first meeting in January or what do you anticipate coming up?
Well, we'll be, since we're canceling the next meeting, we can work over the next week or two and.
Get it.
Figure out how to break it up and then we'll get it posted and sent out and then.
Maybe just do it in parcels and start with a, yeah, okay. Okay, sounds good. So with nothing else, I guess we are adjourned. Oh, do we have anything else? Oh, no, that was a fast meeting, huh?
Thumbs up.
Okay.